Good evening. Let's call to order the Planning Commission meeting of September 9th at 7:00 PM. The city strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyvale prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents. We are committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of the diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. This Planning Commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech to prevent our meetings from being disrupted. This protects the rights of other speakers and ensures the commission can accomplish its business in a reasonably efficient manner. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission for consent, calendar, or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the Planning Commission's authority to address, generally referred to as within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. The providing officer will make a determination as to whether a speaker's comment is related to an agenda item being considered by the commission or to a matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission during oral communications. If a speaker does not comply, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. The presiding officer will not rule speech out of order because the presiding officer disagrees with the content of the speaker's speech. Before we get started, I'd like to remind participants of some procedural items for the meeting. During the meeting, remote participants will remain muted when not speaking. If remote participants have a question or comment, please use the raise hand feature. Speakers will be called upon to speak one at a time. A random order voice vote will be administered by the recording officer for each vote. Members of the public may participate in person, online, or by telephone to provide public comment. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer in person or use the raise hand feature online to request to speak, which is star nine on the telephone. Location and teleconference meeting details are available on the agenda. Captions are available to viewers accessing this meeting via Zoom. Captions can be displayed or hidden using the show captions button. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted at the time I open oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close the public hearing on the agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to no more than three minutes, and timelines will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city's website and on the meeting agenda. Now, please join me for the salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, in condition under God, indivisible, with little duty and justice to all.
Recording officer, may we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Fragone? Parag Glacius?
Present.
Vice Chair Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Pine?
Present.
Commissioner Shukla?
Present.
Commissioner Segura?
Present.
Commissioner Saroni?
Present.
We have seven commissioners present.
Thank you. All right, before I open oral communications, we have an announcement. There is recruitment underway for the Charter Review Committee for the city. The committee will gather and evaluate ideas for amendments to the city charter. Committee meetings will begin in December and run through early 2026. This charter review process will include public participation and adequate time for the city council to place any proposed changes on the November 2026 ballot. Applications are due by 4:00 PM on Thursday, October 24th, in order to be scheduled for an interview with the council on Tuesday, November 12th, or Wednesday, November 13th. General eligibility requirements include Sunnyvale residency. For more information, please visit sunnyvale.ca.gov and search Charter Review Committee or call the office of the city clerk at 408-730-7483 to request an application. At this point, I'm going to open oral communications. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on topics not listed on tonight's agenda. This section is limited to 15 minutes and may be extended or continued after the public hearings general business section of the agenda. Individuals are limited to one appearance with a maximum of up to three minutes per speaker. As stated at the beginning of the meeting, this commission is considered a limited public forum, and the commission can regulate the time, space, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the Planning Commission's authority to address, once again generally referred to as within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker does not speak to a matter within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order to allow the commission to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and protect the rights of other speakers. The presiding officer will not rule the speech out of order because the presiding officer disagrees with the content of the speaker's speech. As a reminder to the public, please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone if you wish to address the Planning Commission. Now, I'll call on members of the public participating in person first, then the recording officer will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address the Planning Commission. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Recording officer, do we have any in-person speaker cards?
We do not, Chair.
Okay. Is anyone else interested in speaking in oral communications before we hear from remote speakers? Okay, because of the nature of remote communication, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Therefore, speakers are warned to limit their comments to subjects that fall within the commission's authority to decide or take action. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Not at this time.
Okay, then I will go ahead and close oral communications. Thank you. Next, consent calendar. I'll go ahead and open the public comment section on consent calendar items. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission, please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Use the raise hand feature now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, then the recording officer will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it is their turn to address the Planning Commission. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone interested in speaking on a consent calendar item before we hear from remote speakers? Okay, because of the nature of remote communication, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Therefore, speakers are warned again to limit their comments to the agenda item being considered. The title of this is the Consent Calendar. Recording officer, do we have any remote speakers wishing to speak?
We do not, Chair.
Okay, and I will close the public comment, and I will now ask for a motion for my colleagues. Vice Chair Davis?
A motion to move forward the consent calendar.
Thank you. Commissioner Pine?
Yes, but I'd like a friendly amendment to make a correction on page, the very bottom of page seven of the minutes. It says Chair Pine closed the public hearing as I was, I'm no longer the chair and was not present at the last meeting. I believe that should say Chair Glacius closed the public hearing.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yeah, I agree with the friendly amendment.
Thank you.
All right, recording officer, please conduct a vote.
The motion passes with six yeses and Commissioner Pine abstaining.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move to general business. Our first and only item for this evening is number 24-0922. It is a proposed project, special development permit, to demolish two existing used auto sales buildings and construct a mixed-use project of one, a six-story senior housing building including approximately 12,232 square feet of commercial floor area, 113 independent living units, and 36 assisted living accommodations, and two, a three-story convalescent hospital building with 72,000 square feet of floor area and a 52-bed capacity. The location is 1027 to 1035 West El Camino Real. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, good evening. My name is Jeff Cucci Notta. I'm the project planner on this project. And we have a presentation and discussion for you tonight that is probably going to look and sound familiar to most of you as this project was before the Planning Commission in June of this year for study session. And then there's also just by chance a similar zoning discussion as the public hearing item in August last month. So some of this might sound very familiar, so thanks for your attention and patience as we get through this. And then I'll also mention for the commissioners' benefit, we have materials board, material boards for the proposal that are up just behind you if you have any interest in taking a look while we discuss the architectural components. Okay, so tonight we have a, the proposals for a special development permit, as was mentioned, to demolish the existing auto sales buildings on site and to redevelop the site with two new buildings. One is a senior living mixed-use building that's six stories tall, has just over 12,000 square feet of commercial retail space on the ground floor, as well as residential amenities. On the second floor, there are 36 assisted living units in, right, that's on the second floor. Then on the third through the sixth floors, we have 113 age-restricted rental or independent living units, which have a total of 153 bedrooms and 15% of those units, or 17 units, will be low or very low income or affordable to lower, very low-income households. And then the second building is a convalescent hospital, an inpatient rehab building, which is three stories tall and has 72,000 square feet of floor area and a 52-bed capacity. And the overall residential density for the proposal is 47 dwelling units per acre. So now to look at a little bit of the neighborhood context. Here in the red and white dashed line, you have the property boundaries. This is 1027 to 1035 West El Camino Real or El Camino or ECR. It's a 2.42-acre site located close to the intersection of El Camino and Mary Avenue. And it's got direct frontage on El Camino to the south and Olive Avenue to the north. To the west of the project site is the Naya Apartments and Palo Alto Medical Foundation site. There's commercial and multifamily residential uses to the east. To the north is, across Olive Avenue, is a mix of multifamily and single-family residential. And the majority of the El Camino Real corridor in the vicinity of the project site is also auto-dependent, but commercial and retail uses as well. Now, for a little zoning context, the map on the screen here shows the El Camino Real specific plan boundaries in the black and white dashed line. So at least on this view, everything along El Camino is within the specific plan area and has a zoning designation of either ECR MU for mixed use or ECRC for commercial. And the specific site here is zoned ECR MU 42. And that 42 is the the base maximum density. That's the permitted residential density for the development here. And as I mentioned, the proposed density is 47 dwelling units per acre. So you might be wondering, what's the disconnect here? Well, it's because the applicant is actually eligible for a density bonus through participation in the specific plan, Community Benefits and Incentives Program for providing all of the parking below grade. The MU 42 zoning district also has a requirement for ground floor, a component of the ground floor of the mixed-use building to be set aside for commercial or retail land uses. And a minimum in this case is 20,000 square feet. And applicants requesting a deviation from this standard, which we'll talk about later in the discussion. Now, just briefly, a little bit of background. The, well, I mentioned the zoning, but the land use transportation element, general plan designation is also ECR SP for the specific plan with the mixed-use designation. And just a few key dates. The applicant actually first submitted a a preliminary review application in 2022, oh, I'm sorry, in 2021, which was when the city was updating the specific plan. And they closely followed the public hearing and adoption process for the specific plan. So they've designed the site to be largely in compliance with the specific plan as it stands adopted. And then the specific plan itself was adopted in the summer of 2022, and that zoning went into effect in September 2022. And then the formal application for the site was submitted in March 2023. We also had a community outreach meeting in April 2024. And then, as I mentioned before, we had the study session in June of this year. Now, for the proposed site plan, here you can see El Camino to the south on the bottom part of the site plan and Olive Avenue to the north. You have the senior living mixed-use building to the west and the convalescent hospital on the, on the east side. The only public access driveway is from El Camino. So you have this driveway access lane from El Camino that goes in between both buildings, and then there's a roundabout towards the northern end of the lot that provides access to the below-grade parking for each buildings. And then from Olive Avenue, there's no public driveway access. You see the green landscaping area. That's an emergency vehicle access. And then on the north side of each building, there's the solid waste recycling pickup and loading drop-off for each buildings. As I mentioned, all parking is provided below ground for both buildings, except there are three surface parking spaces next to the convalescent hospital building. There's also there are multiple open space amenities throughout the project, both on the ground floor and then within the mixed-use building on some of the upper floors that are accessible to the residents. And then in front of the convalescent hospital, there's a therapy courtyard space that is, it's about four feet below grade, below the level at the sidewalk along El Camino Real. That would be for patients staying at the convalescent hospital, not open to the public. Another zoning standard that applies here is the daylight plane. And this only applies on specific plan properties when they're adjacent to a non-specific plan property. So in this case, as most of the, well, all of the El Camino corridor is within the specific plan, this only applies to the property along Olive Avenue. It's the existing multifamily site to the east. And so the rendering here actually has the orientation flipped, so El Camino Real is to the, on the top of the slide. And then you see the 45-degree daylight plane angle that is being applied only on that that lot perimeter that's shared with that multifamily site to the east. And the convalescent hospital building has been designed to be fully built within that vertical building envelope limitation of the daylight plane. So we, staff recognizes and appreciates the applicant's willingness to continually listen to staff feedback, and they actually did redesign this part of the building to make sure that they're meeting that zoning standard. Now, to talk briefly on the proposed architectural design, we have the elevations on the screen here of the senior living building. The image on the top is the south elevation, so looking from, from El Camino Real. And it, actually, you're seeing on the rendering more than what you would be seeing from the street because there's actually the pump building that is in place now and will be blocking most of that view from the right-of-way. And then on the bottom of the screen is the north elevation from Olive Avenue. And the, the building height from the top of curb to the top of the roof is 68 feet from the El Camino frontage and 75 feet from the Olive Avenue frontage. And there are some rooftop mechanical screening components that are taller than 75 feet, but are within what the zoning allows for rooftop elements. Some of the proposed building materials include, on the ground floor, there's a stone-based veneer at the entrance to the senior living building, which you'll see on the next slide. And there are, there's gray stucco and then metal coating that lines the top of the ground floor. And on the second floor and above, it's a mix of white cement, plaster stucco. And then there are also these vertical rainscreen panel elements that are the brownish, the terracotta color. It's fiber cement material that project from the building facade and visually connect the building across multiple floors. And then here you have the view of the east and west elevation. So the east view is visible from the convalescent hospital side. And then the west view on the bottom of the screen is visible from the Naya pump side to the west. So just a few more details here. You've got the porch area or the patio elements of the multifamily units on the above floors that have glass railings and dark gray metal railings and canopies. And then in general, these facades are, it's a little hard to see on this two-dimensional rendering, but the facade projections are broken up through different projections for windows, the patios, and the rainscreen elements, like I mentioned. I'll defer to the applicant if they want to go into a little bit more detail about the proposed architecture. I'll also note that the design for the mixed-use building, it has not largely changed since we were at the study session in June, which is a good thing because the proposal meets all of the applicable objective design standards for multifamily residential development. And then here to look at the renderings of the convalescent hospital. Here you can see, well, you can't see the height label here, but it's 57 feet tall from the, from the top of curb. And then you can appreciate a little bit here the fact that the ground floor is a little bit below grade, and that allows for incorporating that therapy courtyard area into the the ground floor space for patients. Some of the proposed building materials here include white stucco for most of the building, and then you've got a smooth gray stucco on the stairwell element that you can see from the El Camino Real frontage that spans the full building height. And then also in this building, you have some additional rainscreen metal panel components, which you can appreciate a little bit more on the next view, on the east and west elevations here. So the top image is the view from, looking from the east, from the Mary Avenue side. And then the bottom image is from, this would be visible from the senior living mixed-use building. And then here's a 3D rendering from the El Camino Real side looking to the north. Here you can appreciate a little bit more some of the projections and the rainscreen elements, mainly on the senior living building. So that really creates a unique design and building frontage visible from the public right-of-way. Here are two other renderings. On the top left side is the southeast view, also looking from El Camino. And then the bottom right image is looking from the north. You can mostly see the senior living building here. Now, as I mentioned, the applicant is requesting a deviation, one special development permit deviation, which is from the minimum required ground floor commercial area. Minimum required is 20,000 square feet, and the proposed is 12,232 square feet. And then, this is not a deviation, but the zoning ordinance allows for parking adjustment for certain land use types and special housing developments and certain non-residential uses being some of those. And so we have land use in the mixed-use building that qualifies as special housing development. And in this case, the applicant is, well, the code requires at least 59 spaces for the commercial component, just the commercial component of that mixed-use building. And the proposing 49 for the convalescent hospital building and for the senior living, the residential component of the mixed-use building, the application complies with the minimum required. So it's really only this 10 parking space adjustment that is deviating, so to speak, from the zoning standards. And staff has been supportive of the parking adjustment. Considering the land uses, the proposed land uses in the senior living building appear to be compatible with Appear to be compatible with each other, they're they're proposing a some gym space on the ground floor. And then there's also another potential tenant space. The exact land use or or tenant hasn't been identified yet. But there are opportunities for synergies with the for for those services to extend to the residents living above. There's also a shuttle service that the applicants identifying for the residents in the the senior living building. Okay, so then that brings us to our staff recommendation. So the three alternatives we've identified in the staff report are to. One, approve the SDP and the sequo determination per the recommended findings and conditions of approval. Number two would be to approve the SDP and sequo determination, but with modifications, which we'd be able to discuss tonight. And alternative three would be to not make the findings and to direct planning staff where changes should be made. And so as you can anticipate, staff is recommending. Alternative one to approve the SDP and the SEQA consistency determination. In line with the the findings and the the COAs that we've presented in the staff report. And then just as I wrap up, I'll mention. Since the agenda packets were made available for you later last week. We received just one letter from the public about this project in support of approving the project. And I think I'll close from there and we're happy to take any of your questions. I'll just mention also, if we have any environmentally related questions, we have our environmental consultant on the line, Alicia Gonzalez with Michael Baker. So yeah, happy to get into the discussion with you. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. As a reminder to my colleagues to use the raise hand button to indicate you wish to speak. And we're going to get started with Commissioner Pine.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank you for that very thorough staff presentation. I know it's retreading some ground that we've seen previously, but that's all for the good, given that it's 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 the public hearing. We might have people watch and and even for non-commissioners, you may have people watching that weren't watching the study session. The also to any members of the public watching, I'd also like to note that in our materials for this, in our materials for this meeting. We had some aerial views of this of the project. And I thought that in combination with the elevations did a very good job of kind of showing the showing off the 3D nature of. Of some of the projections and such, so those. So those are so I'll at least so at least for myself, I feel very. I feel like I have a very good visual of that. My actual just one question, and this is might be a little pedantic, but. The okay, so as noted in the staff report, there's no current. There's no active municipal requirement for all electric residential construction. Because it was suspended by the city council because of judicial action at in in other jurisdiction, et cetera. So what I'm getting a little hung up on is Hatchment three, page two, finding A7. Says, and I quote, "The senior living building of the project is designed to be LEED gold certified, would have all electric appliances. No gas line connection includes EV chargers and have has a rooftop area reserved for photovoltaic hookups." I'm fine with I'm I I'm fine being able to make the findings for three of those, but. I'm not but absent a condition of approval requiring all electric appliances, I'm not sure how I would be able to make the. Finding regarding that little clause.
Yeah, I don't know, Sean or George, if you want to comment about. How we've handled this with other projects that have come to the PC since the. The requirements have been suspended.
And I mean, I'm more than happy asking the applicants if they were would be willing to voluntarily commit to that. But I obviously that would be a question for when we spoke in public comments.
Yeah, if we could maybe just raise that question with the applicant and see if that's something that they would consider. If not, then the commission could address it with the findings.
Okay, I'm yeah, I am. And to be clear, I am extremely supportive of having all electric appliances. I also just want to keep us legal, so. So that so to the applicant, that is something I would like, that is not something I can require, but it would make me very happy. So just something for when you you come up. Thank you. That was all I had for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Next we have Commissioner Saroni.
Thank you, Chair. Let's see. Just a clarification, the the parking, the request for deviation is. Is really tied to the smaller retail. This is for the parking for commercial, right? It's scale for the smaller commercial request, right? So I mean, if we aren't they tied together? If we let's say we approved the smaller commercial, then the parking requirement would automatically be scaled as well, right?
Well, so yes, you're right. It's just for the commercial component. And yeah, it's a minor clarification, but it's the adjustment. It's not a deviation, but right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and just but also mention that we we did ask the applicant if they would be open to. Delineating some of those parking spaces at the first basement level in the mixed use building to be. Set aside for retail tenants only. In other words, that we would discourage residents from parking in those spaces. So we could help minimize some potential conflicts. Yeah, so they've noted that some of the those parking spaces are set aside that way.
Okay, good. So I noticed the. The convalescent hospital building, the staff report says is regulated by the California Department of Health Care Access and Information. And will not be subject to the city's green building or reach code requirements. Can you comment on how is that different from the green building or reach codes? Are they similar and?
Well, I'm not so well versed on the distinctions between the two.
Well, I think it's because it's a state regulated project and therefore the city's codes in that regard wouldn't wouldn't apply.
Right, I guess I'm wondering, well, for example, if the. Facility is sold and repurposed. You know, do we have something that's then totally out of compliance or are the? These the. State requirements, you know, are they about the same or comparable? I guess we don't. We don't know the difference here.
Well, it's I mean, it's not something that at least the planning division regulates. So that's kind of why I don't. Not able to give you more direction in that regard.
Okay, all right. I mean, I certainly am happy to see the LEED gold certification and the no gas up gas hookup for the. The residential portion. You mentioned the only driveway access is from El Camino Real, the. I mean, physically, you you could have access from Olive, right? But there's bollards that that block it. Why was that done that way?
Why specifically were bollards?
Driving through or?
Oh, well, so why was the public access limited to just El Camino? Well, to. Keep residents and neighbors to the north in mind in terms of. The possibility for through traffic onto Olive Avenue. Yeah, is is really the main, the main reason.
But you can't park on Olive and walk into both facilities, right?
You could walk in, yeah, yeah, because there it's mainly landscaping to the north of that roundabout, between the roundabout and Olive Avenue. It's mainly landscaping. It's not like it's walled walled off. But I'm not sure if maybe the applicant might want to talk a little bit more about the circulation. There is a sheet in the plan set that outlines the the circulation, pad and vehicle circulation.
Yeah.
So it would be open to pedestrians who happen to park on Olive Avenue, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And finally, so this is there's one, am I correct, there's one property owner, but two facility operators. Was there any discussion of splitting this into two parcels parcels or?
My understanding is that that was never part of the proposal to to subdivide the lot, no.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Saroni. Next we have Commissioners Segura.
Thank you. I have a small concern regarding like bicycles and I did not see at least on the plans and maybe I missed it. That there is parking for bicycles and since it's going to be low income. You know, housing over there, people might use this type of transportation more often than like cars and whatever. So I would have loved to see something on the plans that accommodated that. So people will not start parking, you know, bicycles and whatnot on the street and start being a mess. And the next thing that also is a concern, especially if everybody is moving or the recommendation is to move to. Electrical or stoves and whatnot is is there a way maybe to propose some. Solar panels on the roof. They don't have to be, you know, the parapet has to keep the equipment of air conditioning, et cetera, et cetera. To be visually, but the the panels can be flat and lower and still accommodate.
Sure, yeah, thanks for those questions. So for the bike parking, the the application actually complies with the minimum required. Bike parking, they have the the staff report mentions there are 87 long term parking spaces. And 12 short term spaces. And so in the senior living building, they are the long term parking are mainly. In the parking deck, I think they're mainly in basement one. And I may want the applicant to correct me if I'm wrong. And then there are bike racks on the at the surface level too, in in front of the building on El Camino frontage. And then also in between both of the buildings. So there are ample bike parking opportunities.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and then for the solar, I believe the plans mention on the roof. The roof sheet, roof detail sheet, there are. There's an area reserved for the potential future solar hookups.
But it's not going to be installed at the moment, like.
Sorry?
It's not going to be installed immediately while while they're building it up. You know, in construction, it's going to be potentially a future location for some.
Right, they they could come in and propose, I mean, they would need their building permits for for any solar. Solar amenities.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Segura. Next we have Commissioner Fionni.
Hi, I had a couple of questions. One is the the access from El Camino getting into the property, so. The concern I have is the traffic backing up because in the same driveway, you've got cars going in and coming out. In a very tight spot, so traditionally, you know, when that happens, you get the potential for accidents. So I'm just wondering if there was any consideration on somehow widening that driveway or putting a space in there. So that when you enter, when you exit, there's more separation so that people can get in and out easier. Also, it makes it more dangerous when you have such a wide driveway for people on bikes or scooters or electric wheelchairs. They're having to go across a larger space where cars are, there's no, there's no safety spot to go where you go from. Say 10 feet across stop and there's a barrier and you get across the other side. When you have a big wide driveway like that, it just makes it more dangerous. So I do have concerns about that. It's probably too late now to make a consideration for that, but maybe future future considerations on these types of driveways. Having a little bit more understanding about the traffic, but I'm just concerned about, you know, it's you kind of go in and you're stuck getting out. There's only one way in, one way out. I'm glad to hear that emergency vehicles, it sounds like they're going to go down Olive. Because I can't see a fire truck or ambulance trying to get down El Camino and make a right turn in there. So I hope the neighbors know that down Olive is, you know, they might have sirens, right? Because I live by a hospital too and it's noisy. So but I'm assuming fire trucks or ambulances will be able to get on that backside where Olive is. So they won't have to deal with El Camino.
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah, and I appreciate your concerns too. I would just just to comment on your your first.
Sure.
First comment. So. The application. Is routed to other departments. I mentioned a similar comment the last time we were here. So we we do make sure that all of the non-planning and zoning related code requirements are met by the application. So we did have our colleagues in Public Works ensure that all of the. Applicable turning radii and whatnot are are met by the by the driveway. It doesn't mean it won't feel a certain kind of way like what what you're referring to or. Impact. Traffic along El Camino, I mean, that's. It's it's one driveway, right? One, one in, one out. I mean, they do have limited frontage on the El Camino side. You know, it's a larger site with most of the frontage towards the Olive Avenue site, so. There there were limited opportunities to kind of reorient the buildings and. Yeah, basically to reorient the buildings without completely redesigning the the flow and circulation of of the site. So you know, the one driveway approach really turned out to be the. You know, the the ideal situation for for the applicant.
I understand.
Sure.
Yeah, just for future and future things like this, something to consider.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And the other thing too, you may not be able to answer this, I'm not sure, but since it's a convalescent hospital and. Assisted living, is there are there going to be more disabled parking spaces available in 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 general? Because you're going to have more patrons that possibly are are disabled or people that are visiting. Their relatives that would need more disabled parking. So are you just going by state standard as far as, you know, these many spaces in a percentage? Or are you guys looking to add more because of the type of business that's here?
Yeah, this is another thing where I might ask for the applicant to clarify if or correct if I'm misspeaking. But they would be meeting state standards. I could also try to pull up the if I could get the count in the site plan, if that might help help to clarify for you.
Sure, yeah, I was just wondering if there's a if there's a different percentage for this type of property or or business? Because it has potentially more people that would be using placards to visit people.
Right, I I don't know of any, but yeah, I'll I'll let the applicant correct me.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fionni. Next we have Vice Chair Davis.
Yes, thank you for the I mean, thank you for the presentation. It's very good. Couple of very detailed questions, and if you don't know, maybe the applicant does. I see the removable bollards and. I'm having a hard time, like there are lots of options for that, so I'm just curious as to what that's going to look like. And and how they would be removed. And then if you could clarify what grasscrete is.
I think I might need the applicant to help with both both of those, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, just to explain a little bit more about how that. Space, the landscaping access, the pedestrian access question came up, how that all will work and and the accessibility.
Excellent. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. And now we have Commissioner Segura. Never mind. All right, seeing no additional commissioner hands. At this point, we'll move to the applicant. The applicant will be afforded 10 minutes for a presentation. After that time, there'll be an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions. And then it'll be opened up to the public forum to also raise questions. At the end of that, the applicant will have five additional minutes to respond to any question or use the time as they see fit.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is John Cowan, Executive Director of Government Relations and Community Partnerships at El Camino Health. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you briefly tonight before I hand things over to Nolan Weinberg from PMB. But I just want. But I just wanted to briefly, uh, talk about how El Camino Healthcare District, since it was first established. And our hospital in Mountain View opened in nineteen sixty one, we focused on serving those who live, work, or go to school, uh, in Sunnyvale. And we're very much looking forward, uh, to the services that will be delivered at the convalescent hospital facility. I'd just like to briefly explain a little bit, um, particularly because there was a question that came up about, uh, ambulances. Um, it's, well, it is a hospital, uh, building type, uh, this isn't a type of facility that. There's a large volume of ambulances going to and from because there's not an emergency department. Uh, so it would just be if there is a senior or someone who has a medical issue, just as they do anywhere else with a ambulance would have to show up. And then transport them to a hospital with an emergency department. Uh, the types of, uh, care that's going on here, uh, it's usually after someone's been in the hospital, um, they might be recovering from a stroke, broken hips. Total knee replacements, neurological disease, or other traumatic, uh, injuries that require physical rehabilitation such as. Working with a speech pathologist, an occupational therapist, really just learning how to return as, uh, quickly as possible to what we call the activities of daily living. Uh, with that, I would like to just quickly thank Jeff, Sean, George, and the many other city staff members who have worked so tirelessly. On getting us to the public hearing tonight and, uh, happy to answer any questions that come up about the services and we'll turn things over to Nolan.
Great, thanks, John. Um, as John mentioned, my name is Nolan Weinberg. Uh, I'm a Vice President of Development with PMB, the applicant and developer on the project. Um, wanted to express our appreciation, uh, for hearing us out tonight on this project. And also our appreciation, uh, to Jeff and the rest of the city staff team. Um, for all the work and collaboration that's gone into this over the past, uh, few years here. Um, really excited about the project and our partners on it and bringing this, um, these two buildings to the community here. Uh, we could go next slide. So, uh, a lot of this is gonna be a little bit repetitive from Jeff's, uh, presentation. He, he covered most of it in a lot of detail, so. Um, should be able to get through it pretty quickly. Uh, so the convalescent hospital is fifty two beds, that'll be operated. By El Camino Health. The senior housing project is a hundred forty nine units, a hundred thirteen. Independent living units, seventeen of which will be affordable, and then thirty six assisted living accommodations. That project will be operated by Watermark Retirement Communities. Um, they have nineteen communities across California, um, over seventy across the country. And, uh, have a ton of experience with this exact, uh, product type. There's also gonna be, um, twelve thousand two hundred thirty two square feet of ground floor commercial retail. That will be leased to a third party fitness operator. Um, so there's gonna be a fitness facility in there. And a cafe as well that will be open to the public. Um, I can kind of hit on the parking question that came up or, or on this. Um, so because that will serve as the fitness amenity for the community. And also be open to the public, there wasn't a need for as many parking spaces because half of the memberships for the facility. Will be residents in the community, so they'll already have parking downstairs. Um, so that was sort of the reason for that, uh, for that request and the, the parking adjustment. Um, next slide, please. Um, so just a little bit more detail about the actual uses here. Um, so the senior living building again will have this best in class fitness facility that'll be leased to a, a third party operator. Um, actually based here in the Bay Area, but has, uh, facilities all over the country. Um, and then the community will have other resident amenities, it'll have two private dining options for residents. It'll have a dog run, um, golf simulator, art room, and some outdoor courtyards on the, uh, second and sixth floors. Um, our operating partner Watermark here really focuses on kind of health and wellness for the seniors and. And really improving, um, their lives as they transition into, uh, into one of these communities. Um, you know, we really view it as critical social infrastructure, it allows, uh, seniors to. Kind of age in their community and, and not have to move, um, outside of Sunnyvale as, as they start to need assistance and, and that sort of thing. Um, and then again, fifteen percent affordable housing requirement, we are complying with, uh, ten percent low income. And five percent very low income. Uh, and then as it relates to the convalescent hospital. Um, as John mentioned, these patients are being discharged from an acute care hospital. Um, they're recovering from some sort of traumatic injury or stroke, uh, or brain injury. And they're coming to this facility for about twelve to fourteen days to rehab and recover and, um, you know, relearn kind of daily living. Uh, activities, and so, um, the patients to even be admitted into this type of facility have to be able to withstand three plus hours of rehab. Uh, five days a week, so it's a, you know, fairly, fairly healthy popular, patient population coming in and they're coming to recover and get back to their normal lives. Um, this specific type of facility has, has really good outcomes. Um, and so we're, we're excited about that. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so we, we kind of hit on the location, uh, in the previous, uh, presentation, so along El Camino Real. Uh, the nearest cross street is, is Mary Avenue, uh, next slide, please. Um, so this kind of zooms in a little bit, you can see the, the project site outlined in the adjacent, uh, Palo Alto Medical Foundation and NIA apartment project. Um, West El Camino Real there, and then again, South Mary Avenue, uh, next slide, please. So just hitting on the site plan, uh, in a little bit more depth, uh, so there's the one vehicular entrance, entrance off, uh, El Camino Real. Come into the site and you can either, you know, drop off at the convalescent facility. And then continue on, uh, down to the right into the subterranean parking structure, or you can continue around the traffic circle. Uh, down below the senior housing community for the commercial retail parking or the senior housing parking. Or you can continue around the traffic circle to the senior housing and, and fitness drop off. Um, and then again, the, the exit is out, back out onto West El Camino Real. There will be emergency vehicular access, uh, through to Olive in the event that's needed. Um, I know, and I'm gonna try and answer some of the questions I heard, but if I miss anything, obviously, please feel free to ask it, uh, after the presentation. Um, so as currently designed, the senior housing community is all electric. Um, we would prefer to keep the flexibility there as it's, you know, not a, not a requirement, but our intention is to design it all electric. Um, and then as it relates to the convalescent facility, that is actually permitted for the building permits through HKI, which is a state agency. So it, it does not have to comply with the REACH codes, it does have to comply with state, um, regulations. Uh, and it would be extremely difficult to design that type of facility to comply with the REACH codes, so that's, that's part of the reason for that. That rule. Um, so. Uh, again, pedestrian access all the way through the site, um, and then as, as Jeff mentioned, uh. You know, we worked hard with staff to figure out how to stay out of the daylight plane, so that was one of the big kind of evolutions of, of the site plan and the building design on the. On the convalescent facility. Uh, next slide, please. And then just a couple renderings here, so this is kind of an overhead view from West El Camino Real, um, looking down on the site. Um, next slide. And then here's a view from, uh, from Olive, so you can kind of see the, the back of the site, um, some of the trash and, and loading. Um, into the convalescent facility there. And next slide. And so in terms of schedule, uh, obviously, we're here at our planning commission hearing, September ninth, twenty twenty four. Our plan is to start construction, uh, in November or sometime around then of this year. Uh, it's about a twenty four month construction schedule, so that would put completion at the end of twenty twenty six. Um, next slide, please, I think that's, yeah, and then so wanted to open it up to, uh, for a Q and A. Um, again, appreciate everyone, uh, listening to our presentation tonight and considering this project for approval. Um, and that's it, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Um, as a reminder to my colleagues, please use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak, and we'll get it started with Commissioner Shukla.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Uh, great presentation, great drawings. We had seen this project in the study session, so that was really helpful. Uh, but I have a question about, um, about, um, the open space, um. Like, I, I think you have done a great job providing space for every floor except the level. Um, on the residential building, the level four and five has no open space, and I was just wondering that. Whether is it, um, is it going to be like assisted, um, living units on the? Fourth and fifth floor, because that, uh, that's I, I'd see like a lack of open space. That's the one question.
Yeah, sure, I, um, so, yeah, levels four and five will be independent living in addition to level six, and so. They will have access up to that sixth floor, uh, open space, which there will be kind of a, a lounge area and a gardening area that's outdoors as well.
On the fourth and fifth, yeah.
Just on the sixth floor, yeah.
Yeah, I see the big side on the sixth floor, but on the fourth and, so, um, the fourth and fifth floor, they may have to go. Up or down.
Correct.
But they, if they are assisted living, maybe they can take, somebody can take them. Uh, I, I just don't know exactly the, how this facility works, but it's always good to, I mean, you have given. Open space on every floor except for ten, I just wanted to bring that to attention to you.
Yeah, and the, the assisted living residents are only on the second floor, and so they have their own kind of private outdoor area. And then the rest of the floors are all independent, so they'll be able to, um, to access the sixth floor and then obviously the ground floor.
Okay, so they will just have to fourth and fifth, okay.
Yeah.
So that's kind of, I think it'd be nice to have, anyway, that's, um, good to know, thank you.
Yep.
And let me see, the other question I had was, um. I mean, you have, um, uh, like, you've provided a lot of, um, trees for the, for the whole facilities. Do you, I mean, because you are removing thirty nine trees, uh, so are these trees will be, uh, will come up quickly? Or how long will it take to grow in its mature state?
Yeah, I, so unfortunately, our landscape architect had an emergency and couldn't make it tonight. Um, I don't know, Tyler, if, are you, do you have any kind of background on? We, we might need to revisit that one, we, uh, yeah, kind of rolling with the punches here, our landscape architect wasn't able to make it, unfortunately.
I mean, I did check out all the trees, they're pretty, uh, you know, local and nice trees, uh, but I just. Um, I wish that they can be, I know they're twenty four inch box, but it can be maybe some. Where El Camino Real, like, so some mitigation could be faster.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the only suggestions I have.
Okay.
Or otherwise, yeah, otherwise I, let me see anything else. No, I think this is, that's it, otherwise I remember the distinctly. Uh, the question I asked about, um, your front, um, garden, uh, where you are going to have a physical therapy. Um, court or like the space, and it's greatly developed. I, I mean, it's wonderful to have a mini garden in my backyard. But anyway, that's it, I won't have another question, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shukla. Next, we have Commissioner Serrano.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, let's see, a question for the applicant, I just noticed there are many services and programs offered. In the convalescent hospital, like physical therapy, for example, are any of these offered to patients not in the hospital?
Uh, we do not have any outpatient, uh, space in the convalescent hospital. Uh, so all the services will be for patients who are, uh, admitted into the hospital.
And, um, the, I was curious, what, what is it about, uh, a convalescent hospital that? Makes it hard to comply with the REACH codes?
Uh, Joe, do you wanna take that?
Uh, thank you. This is, uh, Joe Low, I'm with Material Design Architects, uh, working on the convalescent hospital. Thank you for your time on this, and, um, it's not that we, uh. Won't be able to completely meet these conditions, but, um, with the state, there is equivalency that we're using. As metrics is and making sure that we are meeting the highest standards of performance with the mechanical systems. Um, recirculating water, um, so we are actually attempting to hit all of the standards with lead and. Other types of high performing buildings, it's just we're not actually being mandated towards it, so, but we are using dual pane glass, high efficient. Chillers, um, and air conditioning units, all that is, is at the highest standards. Um, so we are making sure to make this a high performing building.
Okay.
Yeah. I can give some examples of that, if you want, um, for instance, R thirty roof insulations, LED lighting throughout. Um, we do have the electric car charging, we do have bicycle, uh, storage as well. All the rainwater is being collected into planters, um, for, for, um, circulation. Um, so that's why some of the examples that we are hitting those high standards.
Okay. Um, good, um, I'll just, uh, mention that I, that, uh, there's a assisted living facility. Not too far from my house, and there are, I, I don't know why, but there are emergency vehicles there, it seems like. Very, very frequently, so I hope the, uh, uh, the retractable bollards, it's, it's. That it's not, uh, you know, a big operation to, uh.
Yeah, no, those, those would just be, um, so the fire department would have access to unlock, and then they'll just pull right out to be able to drive the truck through. And then they can drop in place. They're not very heavy to remove.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrano. Next, we have Commissioner Pine.
Thank you, and I will say, I'm not, regarding the previous comment, I will say I'm not too sad to see the liquid amber trees along El Camino. Being replaced just to somebody that likes to occasionally walk along El Camino and not accidentally trip on spiky fruit. But, uh, I just had one question, uh, and you may not have the answer to this yet, uh, the. Uh, there's a condition of approval, uh, about, uh, that says, that just specifies under the municipal code, the project subject to art. And of, uh, either an art requirement or a contribution to the arts fund in lieu of providing public art. Have you given any thought as to which of those options you'll be pursuing?
Yeah, at, at this point, we are, uh, leaning towards the contribution to the public art fund.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Next, we have Vice Chair Davis.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so I had my question earlier, um, if, if you could clarify what grasscrete is.
Yeah, so grasscrete is, uh, what they do is they use a concrete underbase and then they have the planting over it, so you can actually drive on it. It allows for a more durable surface for that, but it'll appear as if you have a natural landscape over it, but underneath the surface is a hard. Uh, layer, the concrete masonry units are placed.
Oh, okay, so, so you won't actually see like a lattice, concrete lattice or anything?
Um, yeah.
It's actually underneath it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I'm curious what the bollards are gonna look like, it seems like we had.
They'll look like standard bollards, and then they'll be able to be in a little wider, um, anchor hole that they can come in and out of. But otherwise, they'll be standard looking.
So they're metallic or?
Yeah.
Or we haven't decided yet?
Yeah, as far as, if they'll be painted, what color is that what you're referring to? I mean, I think that there's some, uh, flexibility there. If there's a standard that's needed to be met.
Okay, okay, I'm just curious, we, it seems like we have pictures of everything but that, but, uh.
That could be provided.
Um, and then, um. Um, approximately how many employees, um, w- will be, I guess, in both facilities?
I'll speak to, you wanna speak to the?
You wanna start?
Yeah, and the convalescent, so the, at the peak time, I believe we had, uh, estimated forty eight employees. Um, and that's like, it gets rotated, so that's a peak time, but, um, generally at night, there'll be a smaller number. Uh, but it is open twenty four seven.
Yeah, as Joe mentioned, it's, uh, somewhere in that forty peak employee range for the convalescent hospital and similar actually for the senior housing project as well.
Okay, so we're looking like.
Seventy to eighty total.
Seventy to eighty peak time, and that's nice, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Yep.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. Next, we have Commissioner Shukla.
Thank you, Chair, I, I forgot to ask one question. I read somewhere that there is an emergency water storage tank under the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, um, also a state requirement, uh, more recently, the, uh, NPC five, which stands for. Uh, non, it's a, uh, a performance for in case of seismic emergency that the hospital will remain open. If there was a earthquake and they couldn't get a water source, uh, this tank is, uh, scheduled to hold seventy two hours. Of water supply for the hospital, should they not be able to have water on site for that amount of time, that will hopefully allow for the repair of whatever the water source. You know, city water sources.
And they believe, uh, is it the water harvesting from the?
No, it's buried underneath and it's, um, supplied with water and, uh, through the water, city water. And then it has a valve that will release that water to the hospital if needed.
And this is going to be under the driveway?
Yeah, it'll be buried under the ground, yeah, so you won't see it.
Somewhere, and then I didn't see anywhere.
Yeah, you won't. Yeah, you won't see it. Yeah, it's it's buried under.
Seventy two tons, you said?
Seventy two hours worth of water, so it's actually um, I think it's fifteen thousand gallon tank.
Mm hmm.
Oh, great. Nice to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Shukla. Okay, not seeing any other commissioner hands at this point. I'm gonna go ahead and open up to the public hearing on this specific item. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission, please submit a speaker card to the recorder, recording officer using the raise hand feature now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call members of the public participating in person first. Then the recording officer will ask remote participants to unmute when it is their turn to address the planning commission. Speakers will each have three minutes to speak. Uh, and I have several in person. Uh, first, we'll begin with Mary Bernard. Marie Bernard, excuse me.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Marie Bernard. I'm Executive Director of Sunnyvale Community Services. And I'm here to talk and support of the El Camino Health uh Initiative that you're uh going to be voting on tonight. Sunnyvale Community Services has worked very closely with El Camino Health for joint ventures to look at how we can support our most vulnerable families here in Sunnyvale. And they're an important health provider, of course, with a long term commitment to Sunnyvale. For over a decade, the El Camino Healthcare District, which includes, of course, parts of Sunnyvale, has supported two critical case management programs at our agency, helping the most vulnerable. Specifically, our case management for families facing medical emergencies who need financial assistance as well as case management in connection to resources. And then our case management and food deliveries for over three hundred homebound seniors and disabled individuals living in Sunnyvale. We see every day the need for more healthcare delivery in our city that's accessible here in Sunnyvale. That's why we're supportive of the new convalescent hospital with a fifty two bed capacity. The facility will serve patients recovering from many uh operations and strokes um and neurological diseases or other traumatic injuries that require physical rehabilitation and having it close to home is very important. Um, it's positive that a community minded healthcare provider will have this new facility here in Sunnyvale. Um, it's been noted before that we don't have enough medical facilities here in our city. Currently, seniors on Medicare who need acute inpatient rehab after a hospital stay at El Camino have to go to El Camino's unit in Los Gatos if they want to stay with their Medicare provider. We see this new facility in Sunnyvale will be much more convenient. And I'm also very glad that um seniors who live on fixed income, who don't have access to a lot of transportation are going to be able to access it here right on El Camino Real here. So um I am also want to say that we're thrilled also that there's going to be more senior living here in Sunnyvale. That a portion of them will be for low income and some for even extremely low income families and residents here in Sunnyvale. And I'm also very glad to hear that there may be a shuttle because we also need more transportation for low income people as well as all of our residents, in particular for seniors here. So thank you very much, and I hope that you will vote in support of this proposal.
Thank you very much. Uh, next individual we have is last name Steinen.
Members of the planning commission, good evening. My name is Nissan Steinen. I live on Polk Avenue, a ten minute walk to the north of the site, and I strongly support the proposed development. Uh, I have deep concerns about the rights and welfare of senior residents of convalescent hospitals and nursing homes in this state. However, it seems to me that increasing the number of beds is unlikely to make the problem worse and may improve the situation by giving elderly residents more choice. In general, this community needs more housing, and this project would provide that. In addition, the retail space on the lower floors will enhance our local amenities. This project would make efficient use of our limited land. It would help address our housing shortage, potentially making it easier for more people, including friends and family members of residents like me, to find homes in our community. I urge the commission to expediently approve this project and support efforts to increase our housing supply. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else interested in speaking on this agenda item before we hear from remote speakers? All right, seeing none. Uh, because of the nature of remote communications, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Therefore, speakers are warned to limit their comments to the agenda item being considered. Um, recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Will you not share?
Thank you. Um, at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to the applicant for five minutes. Um, you have, if if you have an additional thing you'd like to share, um, the time is yours.
Uh, nothing additional. Just want to express our appreciation again. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this point, I will now close the public public hearing, um and I'll ask uh for discussion or motion from my colleagues. Uh, Commissioner Pine.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to ask staff if they had any further guidance regarding uh finding A seven on in attachment three.
Very can respond to that for you too. Sorry, um Sean mentioned planning officer. So finding three or sorry, uh attachment three, finding seven basically is just describing what the project is proposing. Um, if you look in the conditions of approval, um it just uh notes the compliance of the green building uh ordinances, um which have all been adjusted with the current uh situation with the council as far as um removing the electric requirements. So it's not requiring them to do all electric.
Okay, yeah, I get that. I'm just I feel like the I'm, I might be getting overly pedantic here, but I just feel like I'm that bumped the thing right off my screen. Um. I I feel like I, just the way I'm reading it, it's saying that I'm making a finding that would have all electric appliances, and I'm not sure I can make that finding.
Yeah, if if you're more comfortable with that, you can uh move to strike the language.
I mean, like, am I just, but am I misinterpreting this? Like, I'm I'd rather go with alternative one than alternative two if we don't have to go with alternatives to this, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, my take would be you can go on alternative one, um because we don't have a specific condition requiring the electric, all electric on the project.
Right, it's just. Yeah, I can go with that.
You're good?
I'm I'm good.
All right, thank you, uh Commissioner Pine. And next, we have Commissioner Shukla.
I mean, if anybody has any comment or I'm ready to make motion.
You're welcome.
Oh, alternative one, do I need to read the whole thing or go with alternative one?
Uh, alternative one, staff recommendation is fine. Oh, go with alternative one, staff recommendation is fine. You don't have to repeat the whole thing, yeah.
All right, thank you, uh Commissioner Pine.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Shukla, to your motion.
Um, I think it's a great project. We um, I mean, this is as uh our speakers publicly commented. This is a great project to have it in Sunnyvale after uh we have our El Camino. Um, um, El Camino is getting developed and this is second project. We are seeing it uh just in the same neighborhood and um uh this is wonderful for our aging community, for our local Sunnyvale residents. It's a gold standard. Uh, so I'm I'm for, I I mean, everything is good about, like, I think they have listened to us. They've incorporated everything, um except um uh less retail space, but you know, I mean, that's like that is at least we are accommodating this retail providing on the ground floor. So hopefully uh we can find some other spaces where we can have a little bit more of a retail. That's the only thing is downside for me. But otherwise, I think it's a great project and I'm willing to support it and about for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Shukla. Commissioner Pine, to your second.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm being, so I've spent a lot of this hearing being very pedantic about findings. So the finding I want to talk about now is a is actually one of the special development permit findings, which is finding number one. The proposed project attains the objectives and purposes of the general plan, the El Camino specific real ugh, the El Camino Real specific plan of the city of Sunnyvale. Uh, so and so as we discussed this, so as you mentioned, this this is uh El Camino Mixed Use Forty Two, which the I and the forty two is the density, but this is a mixed use project. And something I want to emphasize in being able to make this finding is that yes, there's a deviation from the retail. Yes, I don't honestly love deviations from retail requirements. We've discussed, we've discussed the need for retail a lot of times on this dais, and I'm generally never thrilled to see us deviating below that. But in this specific case, I can still make that finding that this attains the objectives and pur- purposes of the of the specific plan, the general plan, because A, we're for a few reasons. A, as mentioned in the staff report, we are, we're still actually increasing the amount of retail on the site. We're sorry for being slow. I'm still not used to doing everything on my tablet. Um, the the, yeah, there's uh it's in the staff report somewhere that, but that says that that says that we're do, we're adding a few thousand extra square feet of ha- of retail over what we currently have. Uh, there's so that's one thing. The other thing is that we're not just saying oh, this is zone mixed use, but we're kind of playing game, but we're playing kind of legal games to say, hey, to say, hey, this isn't, this is, we're just having a tiny little smidgen of of a mixed use project in what is overwhelmingly not really a mixed use project. We have a, we have res- we have residential uses on this project and we have a non, and we have a big non residential use on this project. We have we have the, we have the convalescent hospital and as was, as was noted during public comment and as been noted it was noted at the study session and has been noted by, and has just been generally noted previously, uh we don't act, this is not something we have in, we have a great deal of in Sunnyvale. Uh one of our public commenter said that currently the faci- the current alternate, the current facility in use for this is in Los Gatos and I mean, if you've driven to Los, I, if I drive to Los Gatos like on a weekend when there's no traffic, that's still probably a twenty, thirty minute drive if if you're trying to drive, if you're like, that's, if you're trying to get there via public transit, it's a lot worse than that. Uh, there's, it's not we we like, and whenever we've, whenever we've talked about redeveloping and I think this came up during one of the village centers, during a village center that we approved discussions, but like we talk about, we will talk about, worry about losing medical facilities in Sunnyvale. We cut worry about worry about losing, losing that kind of thing. And this is, this is the kind of and this convalescent center, this is the kind of thing we def, we absolutely need in Sunnyvale and it it will make the, it will make our community a better place. It will mean that seniors in Sunnyvale do not have, do not have to go as far to receive healthcare. It will mean that hopefully s- some, some number of seniors in Sunnyvale will not have to leave Sunnyvale. They will be able to move into the senior the senior living facility and and be able to stay living in Sunnyvale. I there's like, so yes, there are deviations in this project. Yes, there are deviation. Yes, there's a deviation that in a lot of other contexts I would be complaining very vocally about. But here I can see, I can completely see the justification. And as for the parking deviation, uh I think that's been explained very thoroughly, uh that you don't need that much parking when people are going to be walking across the the little driveway to to your retail. Uh, and and again, this is next, this is next to transit. This is next to some, like, the best bus transit we have in the city. This is people will hopefully be able to not, able to not, hopefully not have to use, be able to drive, especially seniors that, let's face it, probably can't drive. Might have, might have medical conditions, might not be able to drive as well as they could have early in their lives. Uh, there there's I can make, so I can make the required findings for the special development permit. I can make the required sequo determination. I very much would like to have this be all electric. I I did hear applicant's response, which is why I'm not trying to, I'm not pushing for to make that required, but but again, I, but it would be, but I'm glad it's currently in the designs. I hope it stays that way. Uh that, uh with that, I would strongly urge a vote in favor of alternative one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. And next, we have Vice Chair Davis.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm I'm strongly supporting the motion. Um I mean, it checks all the boxes. It complies with everything, obviously, and so on. The applicant has um been very professional and courteous and all their interactions with the city staff, with us, with the public. Uh, there there's really nothing to complain about on this uh, on on this development, right? It follows all the rules. Um, it's going to bring needed housing, uh needed medical services. Um, I do actually like the design for the automobiles, um the twenty six foot driveway. Um, and it's, it it's going to be somewhat of a visually busy um drive, right, which slows people down. All right, so I I see conscious design there to slow down the cars um and and um make it safe for pedestrians and so on. Um, I think it's going to improve uh the view tremendously on Olive. Um it it's, um, I haven't actually gone there in person, but just looking at the pictures, it's a little barren, um having a mostly empty uh car lot there right now. Um, and I've gone past this area many, many times over the years and thought uh we could do better than this car lot. And uh this is much better. So so thank you, and I um uh very strongly support um your project.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. Next, we have Commissioner Saroni.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I will also be uh uh strongly supporting the motion. Uh, the uh uh, it's very easy to conclude that uh this proposed use is way better than the current use of this property. Uh, that's kind of an understatement. Uh, and both uses, the uh 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 senior living and the uh convalescent hospital are uh uh are assets to the community that will improve uh our collective lives. Um, as uh, as mentioned previously, we have lost medical services um in Sunnyvale. It continues to be uh uh an issue and uh I just, I would say on my uh with my family members, I have spent way too much time in recent years in Los Gatos for medical services. So uh, I'm glad to see uh something being uh uh put in um here in in Sunnyvale. I think it'll benefit, uh both uses will benefit everyone. So uh, I'm certainly supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Saroni. Uh, seeing no other commissioner hands, uh the only comment I have is I'm also uh very supportive of this project. I think it's a beautiful addition to the community. I think it's going to help enrich the community and offer opportunities for Sunnyvale residents to age in place, which is certainly a community benefit. Now, at this time, we will have a vote. Recording officer, please conduct a vote.
Motion passes with seven yeses.
Thank you very much. And uh planning officer, what are the next steps for this project?
Uh, the project is approved unless it's appealed uh to the city council within fifteen days.
Excellent, thank you, and congratulations on the project approval. Um, we are done with new business and now we will move on to non or yeah, non agenda items and comments. A portion of this agenda is for oral reports and announcements by commissioners and or staff to share information. Starting with planning commissioners, as a reminder to colleagues, to use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak. Uh, do any commissioners have any non agenda items or comments? Seeing no hands, we will move to the uh staff, planning officer. Do you have any non agenda items or comments?
Uh, just a couple. Um, just wanted to check to see how I legislate went and if we had any feedback from no complaints?
I'm not sure if anyone used it.
Did anybody use that? Okay, well, keep me posted. Um.
Commissioner Pine has commented.
Yes.
Uh it's an adjustment. I will have more thoughts after I try finishing adjusting to it.
Okay, well, just let us know.
Like, the main thing that was actually bothering me is not being able to have two documents open at once, because like with the papers, sometimes I'd have like like flipping back and forth between. like looking back and forth between.
Oh, yeah, I could see that.
That's, that could be users that could, again, it's an adjustment. I don't like to judge any software based on like what use.
All right. Um, the second comment is a state of the city event is uh Saturday, September twenty first. Uh, it's from eight AM to twelve thirty, so just make sure you wear the polo shirt that was provided a couple weeks ago. And then lastly, um, there'll be a joint meeting of the city council and board and commission chairs and vice chairs. And that'll be Tuesday, November nineteenth at six PM. And that allows a dialogue between the city council and board and commission chairs and vice chairs regarding board and commission meeting effectiveness. And that concludes staff's comments.
All right, thank you so much. Really excited for that eight AM Saturday morning meeting. Um, at this time, at eight twenty five PM, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for uh participating tonight.